Hi, welcome to have a seat. We are going to get started because we know we have folks who need to be leaving early and we want to make sure that we are able to get through our presentation and have some questions. So, welcome. We are reconvening the, an open session of the Minuteman School Committee. The purpose of today is a presentation and discussion with members of our representatives from our member towns about the potential of adding towns to the district. This is the beginning of a discussion. You know, we're really looking forward to getting your feedback. Because we know we have some folks who have to leave early, we are going to just jump right into the presentation. However, we have a wonderful spread over here to the left. Prepared by the Minuteman Culinary Program. I really encourage you, you can get up, grab something anytime. So, you know, please take advantage of that. And with that, I will turn things over to Dr. Dawson.
Thank you, and welcome. So good to see everyone again. Thank you so much for coming. Thank goodness. And just as a reminder, this is being broadcast virtually for those who are unable to attend in person. This, I just want to share that our school committee in their efforts to be forward-thinking, to really strive to make sure that their towns are well-informed about the possibilities and opportunities, especially on this particular topic of a potential new member town buy-in, if that is something that our towns would be interested in. Our school committee just really wanted us to share as much information as possible. So they have the confidence to be informed and maybe people know how they would benefit. So I just want to thank our school committee for having that forethought. And again, just appreciation. I know I personally have a superintendent for their advocacy for their towns and then for their guidance and support, providing me and our team in leading them. And so I just want to start with that. One of the school committee subcommittee is our Communications Access and Admission Subcommittee. That is chaired by Mr. Stulman and members of our listeners, as you know, and also our school committee chair and Secretary of School Committee, Mr. Lufa. Those are our three representatives that sit on this subcommittee. So again, welcome to everyone. Tonight's agenda, Mr. Stulman will provide us a brief enrollment history overview, just to remind us where we all began. Especially in our old building. And then we will take a look at, you know, the impact on education that we looked at before even thinking about the notion of adding a potentially new member town. And then if doing so, what would be the annual cost to member towns? And then we did create a buy-in calculation that we want to share with you and then we want to discuss possible steps. And we'll open it up to you and any four hours of our representatives who are here, so that we may just share more information, answer any questions. And but no decision is made tonight. It's not about that. It's about information. And I will go to the next and just ask Mr. Stulman to provide us a quick overview of our.
Can I do that from here? Will people be able to hear me? Right. Okay, so I'm going to give you 20 years of history in about three minutes. So if you look at that very interesting slide up there, that's the historical enrollment slide. If you look at the top line is the total enrollment for any year. The middle one is the enrollment from our member town. And the bottom one is the enrollment from our non-member town. If you look at that, you can see some really dramatic changes over that period. I'm going to explain how we got from, really from 2010, which was the same story up until 2023. This is the context we need for the discussion we're going to have. So in, back in 2016, we were in our old building. The district had 16 member towns. The total enrollment was 644, consisting of 406 in-member students. And 238 out of district students. That's where we were then. And we were signed in our old building because we were not able to create the kind of programs that you need to keep up to date in the prayers that we wanted to offer, the prayer paths we wanted to offer. So the decision was made among the school committee to seek a new building. And in that effort, we understood that the current enrollment level was not necessarily going to predict future enrollment. So we engaged in a very long discussion about what would be the right enrollment of the school being moving forward. And even though I'm going to go over this in 15 seconds, that discussion took about five years to do. We, 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 we looked at schools from the size between 400 and 1,000. And then we concentrated on about 400, 600, 800. And for, for a lot of complicated reasons, we ended up with 628. And it was all of our stakeholders who were involved in that discussion, including the MSBA. And they were very interested in the project and we were very interested in them giving us money to help us build these buildings. So they were a important stakeholder in that project. And I want to say that the, the 628 is what we've called 85% capacity. So that's the number we use, but there's a little lag room. So 628 was the, the number that we went for. Now, not all the 16-member communities wanted to participate in this project. And there are all sorts of reasons why they didn't want to remain in the district, one of which was they thought they called us, we'll never fill a 628-student school with member town students. And we don't want to have out-of-district students because they cost us too much money. That was the argument. So in order to move forward, we decided that the best path would be to come up with a new regional agreement, which would allow the towns who didn't want to stay to leave. So it started with 16. Six of them said pretty much right away, we want to leave. So we had 10 communities moving forward with the project and very late in that half, a final town, Belmont, decided to leave. Leaving nine communities to move forward in the project. So the project was approved by the MSBA and we had a vote, a district-wide vote of citizens and they said move forward. And then we built the school. It was supposed to take three years, but we did it in two years and we're on time, not by the other way. On time and on. Okay. So then, of course, we looked at what was happening with our applicants. And we knew that when you have a, a new building with the right facilities, with the right programs, that our applicant pool from in-district was going to grow. But what happened was it doubled within three years. The applicants from in-district town over three years doubled. Which was a pace that I was surprised at. I didn't expect it to grow quite that fast. Other school committee members said, oh, you were wrong, so wrong about that one. I had a, like, evil little problem. But that's what happened. It doubled. Then our, our problems switched from one of having a school that was not enough students for the, for the side of the school to having too many because we were going way past the 628 number. And so then we had to switch gears to say, well, how do we, how many students can we really accommodate? Because what we don't like is for have a lot of students who want to attend the school, not be able to do so. So we switched gears to that. And we were able, through a lot of hard work and discussion, to increase the enrollment in the school to the level you see there, 734. And you also see there that that's almost entirely in-district enrollment. With a lot of hard work. Which brings us not from the 85% enrollment, which you usually talk to, to 100% enrollment. So at this level of enrollment, we are completely filled. And in fact, we have a, a building project going on right now, which is going to be completed by our students. Which is going to help us achieve that level of enrollment. Without adversely impacting the quality of the education we give our students, which is very important. So here we are in a completely different thought process and worldview than we were in 2016. Nine member towns, a school beyond filled, almost completely with in-district students. And this switch from out-of-district to in-district has had a, a big impact on assessments. Because you're sending more students and those dollars that were coming in from out-of-district students are no longer available. So that's where we are now. And we're always forward-thinking. We're thinking of, well, where should we be going in the future? And one of the things back in our mind, kind of due diligence issue was, we went from 16 to 10 to nine. Is that the right membership from the district? Should we have another partner to help us pay the, the capital costs? So that's an issue that we've been exploring for a long time and it brings up all sorts of questions that's going to be posed in a few minutes. And that's the purpose of, of this discussion now, to give you the information needed to take a look at that issue. And I'm done. So thank you very much.
So thank you, Mr. Stulman. So, you know, if I was to summarize that, go to school, they came, we are full. And we have, this was our first cohort of freshmen, all from our member towns. Based on our applications and acceptances for netball, again, you too, all from our member towns. So why then would we consider adding a new member town? So we just wanted to share with you, part of this, of course, is our school committee's forward-thinking, but also we did have several towns for that reached out with interest in possibly joining the district. And the process for adding a new member town does take at least two years. It is a process. There are other new high schools in both in some of our member towns as well as other member towns. And when you think about how and why would that impact us? Career tech education is the hot item for right now. Our industry partners are saying, look, we don't have the pipeline of employees. We have to take a look at how we're educating, preparing our students for career development. And so the crowdfunding state has been to increase interest in expanding how we offer access to career tech education across the state. So while we have a number of our regional districts, our comprehensive high schools are also thinking when we look at, how do we offer career? So in, in an essence, competition for programs is also going to grow. We're part of that project. How are we going to stay ahead of that project? Also, we understand that, you know, the rapid increase in number assessments that Mr. Stulman was talking about, it is temporary. Because once our four-year rolling average does even out, that steep increase in number assessment won't be so smooth as, as it has been of late. And so, but that doesn't mean that the long-term impact of assessments still is a. So taking all these considerations, we're taking a look at, is it the right time to start thinking about adding a new member town? We did have some guiding questions to take forward, whether we continue to do this work. How might we prepare for the possible impact of new high schools? You know, offerings we need as well as just new high school. We built a new school, they came, they may build a new school and they may if they're interested in using Chinese, right? How might we increase access to the quality of career education that Minuteman does offer here without jeopardizing the integrity of what you do offer? How will Minuteman be able to increase enrollment and our capacity? Because that does have an impact. Because right now, we are basing calculations on 100% capacity of 700 points students. But that will come into play because what you're going to see is, and what has come to our mind, as well as I'm sure what you're thinking. If we add another member town and we're already full of our students from our member towns, does that mean that more of our students will have to end up on the waitlist? If we stay at the 720, yes, the likelihood of that is very real. But if there are opportunities to increase enrollment without without decreasing the seat, but rather increasing and going from 720 to 800, based on our calculations, that would allow us to add at least another town without decreasing seat allocations to our current nine-member town. So I just, I'm thinking that now a little, I mean, it may come in a little bit later. But also, what would it take then to determine a fair buy-in to join Minuteman every year? Especially when it has cost our nine-member towns quite a bit for the new building. So those were some of our guiding questions. And so when we took a look at, first and foremost, the integrity of what we offer here at Minuteman. We never want to jeopardize what our teachers are offering, the level of teaching and learning that our kids are receiving. And one of the factors that we use to gauge that is when students come to Minuteman. They're coming because of a passion and a love for a program. Are they able to continue to get one of their top three choices even if enrollment increases? So we were taking a look at, from 2018, which is our graduating class of 2022, to our graduating class of 2027, you could see the range and number of students. And even from our low end of having 123 students, we were able to maintain 98% placement of our students in their first choice. The high end of 191, 89% of our students were able to get their first choice, 9% got their second choice. But we're averaging 180 students per class at the 720 maximum enrollment. So when you take a look at 181, even then, we're still able to maintain 93% of our students getting their first choice. So we felt that if we maintained that 181, we would still be able to maintain within the, the mid, around mid 90% of our students still getting their first choice. So we felt that if we were to add another member town, we would not jeopardize each student's time access to the program of their choice, we can get first, the lead firsts. So we felt that we were in a good space to consider what it would take to add another member town. So here, and this is just a summary shot, just to let you know that where we landed was not like easy. Hey, this is how we should calculate it. The team and kudos to our business team, Nikki, Andre, Rick, uh, right. I can in and a member who wasn't able to be with us tonight, John Camerata. They put in many, many hours, all the different financial models, to try to determine what was the most fair and equitable model. But we're just sharing this with you to, to let you know that we looked at number of different options before we landed on what we're going to share with you. And just as a reminder, we do have a regional agreement that determines the calculations, our total per member town. There are three charts to that, 50% being enrollment, 40% on our combined effort and 10% of people members share. And I know that you're very familiar with that, but just as a reminder that that's what the towns have agreed to as a sort of a compromise. And so I'm going to ask Rich to come and just try to talk you through these next two slides on how we came up with the member buy-in.
Good evening. As you can see before you, these are our assessments based on FY19 to present. Based on each one of our spending districts, our nine spending districts. As you can see that, like, first one is acting, 32 students, $182,000. So we addressed all of FY24, 93 students and $591,000. So we've taken all of the total assessments for every year. totaled up and this is what you would have, and every town would pay for the last six, six years, six fiscal years. Came up with a total of $23.8 million. And we then rolled in the rest of the debt service, which includes our feasibility study as well as our athletic fields. Go up with a grand total of $24.3 million. It's symbolic of these numbers as well. We did an average based on the nine towns, divided by nine towns, come up with the average. $5.7 million would be, you know, when the average price would, would not pay over the last six years. Then we came up with, what's the most equitable way to look at it, buy-in cost? We see, and Dr. Dawson showed you the number of different ones that we went through and so forth. We sold it on 1/10. So we took very easily, we just took the total assessment for that fiscal year, divided by 10. 214,000 for the first, working our way up to 535,008 for FY24. Came up with a round number of 2, well, 200, 2,434,000 and $7, $7. So we go, but what was the easiest way to look at it? $2.4 million would be the buy-in. That would be amortized, as our regional agreement says, over three years for anybody who would want to buy into the district. $800,000 for, for each district, each year for three years. That $800,000 has taken off, would be taken off this number here. And then based on our calculations, that would be the savings, the percentage for each town, that would be the saving each town would which would recognize. Just off the top of my head, acting would, if we did it this way, would be about $90,000. And that would be, like I said, that would be over three years. And then at that point, it also would be, that would be the buy-in assessment. There's also an assessment, a capital assessment for every year as a member town now. So that would not be the final number, the $800,000. They would, based on enrollment and so forth, would be assessed another capital fee on top of that. Similar to what all districts are paying for present.
So they would basically be buying 1/10 of the tax stock. So if there was an interest from our member towns to pursue adding an additional town, it would require a unanimous vote from all nine towns, the unique. So if the unanimous would say yes, then we would go through the process, we would need, that's the approval, and it's if all the stars align, right? And we were able to get into these town meetings and get these votes and then tell me, if anyone says yes, the earliest that we're looking at to possibly allow our first cohort from a new member town would be the school year of '25 or the fiscal year of '26. We did meet with your town and managers and administrators last week and gave them a preview and got some feedback. And I don't know if I should share that with you now or wait until, if you have to say. But basically, I think, you know, we're a kid business. Our towns, just like us as Minuteman, we're about kids. And what the town administrators and managers were saying is this. If letting in a member town means that one of their students, one of our students has to be on the waitlist because we're letting in another town, so we can save some money, they're not for it. Because at the end of the day, the money that you would save compared to the access to the type of education that we offer here doesn't prove it. That was their message. They did come up with another idea that we could, you know, possibly look at, like, it would be different. But one idea that was mentioned was if we have four member towns that are interested and they're willing to pay the $2.4 million, 2, 4, 6, 8, could be almost $10 million, right? That we would have, that we could use to renovate, we do have an east campus building that currently is not being used. Around $10 to $11 million could be used to renovate that, that space to create four additional platforms. That would open up 80 seats. But that's 80 seats per class, it's 20, right? And it would be divided by four, so each town would only be getting access to five seats. I hope, I'm like, oh my gosh, I hope I'm doing my math right. I was not, so I better be doing my math right. But and would it be worth for these towns to say, you know what, we're going to invest all this money, but only for five seats? You know, maybe a stretch, but if they were willing to invest to remodel and have access, or even if it was one member town, right? If one member town says, you know what, no, we, our parents, our town members are saying, we really want this. You'll put that $10 million, $11 million out good by ourselves, renovate and we get there's opportunity for discussion, right? But what we heard from our town, county administrators is that it's not worth putting our kids on the waitlist to try to decrease our number of seats. So we felt it was still important and our school committee and, you know, the district. You are our district, you are our member town. So how we communicate with you and our open dialogue is very, very important. We value your guidance, support and our partnership. These are our thoughts. So we only felt it was our responsibility to bring this information to you and to have you as informed as much as possible for you to ask any questions you may have, anything else that you're, you think we should look further into. And then you decide, is this something that we should proceed with or is it not? Because it does involve our time. And so if it's not something we're interested in, that's okay. But we do want you informed in how you'd like to decide. Um, yes.
I should very quick clarify.
Oh, can I just ask when people speak, if they could introduce themselves to everyone?
Hi, I'm David Martin. I'm on the select board enacted. I have a very, very quick question. That vote that you said from Vastun, is that a ballot vote or a school committee vote or what kind of vote?
County, it's a county, it would come before a county meeting, yes. I'm still learning all the details.
Eric Michelson, Lieutenant of Preparation Community, couple of questions, first of all. Can you describe current enrollment distribution formula that you use, you know, less than 70 some students to the school? Is that going to change all the time if the towns, smaller towns, what's in rush to this, how do you know that?
So this is, I want to say the sheet referring to the seat allocation. So it's based on, correct me if I'm wrong, based on four-year rolling average. And there's a half that is, let me read them, right? Go ahead, Rich. This is the one I haven't had to explain out loud myself.
To your back couple of slides.
Yeah.
You tried it out, tell me, I didn't call it a while, so you might be able to.
Yeah.
This, so this is part of our regional agreement. So 50% is based on enrollment. So you have a four-year rolling average of that, 50% of, of the total number of the students who are allocated. Then we have a combined effort yield, which is set by the state, that is based on your tax base as well as your potential wealth factors. And then we have 1%, I mean, 1 equal share per, per district town. So.
Asking a different question, sorry. You know, so the student, so I'm talking about the diverse, depending.
It's the same way. I'm sorry, it is. So that number is a, she's going to get a, 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 a percentage based on that, based on the total enrollment for all the district. And that percentage is how your seat allocation is determined.
So the percentage is kind of like, how's this, how's this? Sad is, remember, I'm on town, I lock in.
Not, not exactly, because it's based on enrollment. So the towns fluctuate enrollment. So like some teams, towns will go up by eight, eight, once, one year and so forth, and towns will go down eight. So it's all based on enrollment.
No, it's still trying to certify. For, for incoming class, I don't know how many seats there are.
Um, so I know Alice, you, you would like, would you like to answer this?
I'm, I'm going to try to explain how we got. Anyway, so there are school districts in the US, she needs to be around several number of communities. And over time, one of them becomes a large city and completely overwhelms this whole district. So that you're 75% because of one town and me. It is so unbalanced, it's, it's really bad. I mean, that voting, if you think, I think the voting that he has, it's interesting that. So then you would make sure, and also to make sure that the smaller communities were guaranteed to have seats. That we wouldn't be overwhelmed by giant communities in fusion. And so we do what we have called a slot allocation. And we vote on it every year. So it does change, it's adjusted. It's based on four-year rolling average of the students that are incoming. But it's a minimum, so it's not a, it's not a quota. It's more of a guarantee, people have access, at least this much access to the school. And nobody will get frozen out. There will be some town that can't send students to Minuteman because there are just so many kids. And nobody will get frozen out, there will be some town that can't send students to Minutemen because there are just so many kids.
So, I have a follow-up question. So you must have to leave a certain percentage of, of available seats open every year, obviously just maintain.
Yes, so it is, it is just, you know, it, it's not filled up as a minimum number that, that we just try to, to make sure that everybody gets access.
So just to voice, what I'm actually, I'm just developing this as a basis, one percentage of seats left open to be kind of distributed.
So I don't, I don't want to say that it's left open, right? But because what happens is once we determine, so Lexington, right? The fifty percent equal share, and this is for our graduating class of twenty-twenty-seven. So fifty percent, everyone gets five point five six percent broken down. Then the other fifty percent average for your rolling, based upon, I'm saying the fifty percent based on four-year rolling average, Lexington gets six point nine two percent. So then there's that percent calculated for each town and then we take the total percent of the annual minimum slot allocation, so the five point five six plus the six point nine two gives you twelve point four seven percent. So of the hundred and eighties, what is the twelve point four seven percent? Then you, um, Lexington is allocated twenty-two seats. Right? So we then get a seat allocation, thank you so much, sir, seat allocation per each town that equals a hundred and eighty. What happens though is that historically, certain town would only send a certain number and they couldn't fill all of their seat allocations. So once every town has access to the number of seats, but if there are any seats left open, but they didn't fill it, that's when we go and fill from other towns who have additional, does that make sense?
Yeah, that's.
And, and by the way, um, answering the question was also Alice DeLuca, who is a school committee member from, so, so. Other, other questions, I want to make sure we have plenty of time, yes.
Hi, I'm, I'm Roylson Bolton.
Hi.
Hi, you may. Um, I used to, I had not spent nearly as much time driving to Minutemen as our original district, so I apologize for this basic question, but, um, you mentioned there were several member towns that may be building high schools, so potentially the appetite for theirs. So under a situation where the enrollment demand from member towns has dropped in five years, like excess capacity, what's the difference in like the cost per pupil if it's out of district students coming in versus one or two new member towns?
Oh, this is a big, so we're excited, uh, okay, so what is the difference between our member towns?
Like, is, what's the value of maybe being a member of towns versus just, things that are considered out of district students?
Yeah, um, and I'm going to ask, can we find that because there is a difference, um. It's, it's less expensive to be an out of district, um, sending from out of district and that, part of that is determined by the state. So it's not like we could say, no, you know what, to make it comparable, we're going to raise it because the state determines what we can charge for that. So I don't, can maybe we'll find, try to get, what the difference is, um, and so I think, you know, towns, I think we're betting on that, hey, if we leave, do you know that they're not, they haven't been filling with members, so there won't be seats available and we'll be able to send as out of district. And now they're seeing that they can come. And this is also like one of our, we've had a suspicious year relationship with them sending their students as out of district. Right? But now that we see that that availability, that is no longer available, that's why now they're saying, what would it take to become a member and is that something for their town to, to do, right? Um, so, yeah. So, uh, the, for an average of per people cost per members, it's for F Y twenty-four, around thirty-one thousand. Um, in F Y twenty-two and twenty-three is around twenty-nine thousand. Um, if you are an out of district member, um, or out of district town that's sending a member, they have to pay a tuition that's set by the state, D S E. Um, this year it was just shy of twenty thousand, nineteen thousand. Um, in addition to that, our school committee votes a special education fee each year based on our special education expenses divided by the number of special education students we have. So if your student was on an I U P or in the special education program, you would pay an incremental fee. Last year it was around seventy-one hundred, this year it'll be around seventy-eight. Um, third part of the fee is our capital fee. Um, the state and the commissioner did approve us to charge a capital fee um, for out of district students coming here because, as you can see from the historical data, there was a number of, or there have been a number of out of districts for this in the past, so depending on if your town offers more than five chapter seventy-four programs, um, the rate does change slightly. About eight thousand dollars if you're paying, and about five or six thousand if you're paying. So there are three different portions, you know, depending on which is applicable to your town, um, how much it would cost.
How about transportation?
In addition to that, the, yes, the member town or the out of district, um, town is responsible for transportation to and from us.
Maybe there's one other thing that I, that you guys never mentioned.
Yeah.
Out of district towns sending students, they don't, we don't get any chapter seventy-eight from. The sending towns keep the chapter seventy, can apply that, you know, already the kind of month they pay, so we definitely lost that, the district loses, they don't get a chapter seventy for those.
Yes, Jason.
Jason Colville, you have the finance committee, just wanted to make sure that my memory was correct on this, uh, when the new school was built, I believe the M S B A that set the size of the school, the M S B A said, we're not going to build anything small on this, we have to build it at least to the best size. Uh, and then part of the reason why the school was built at the size that it was is because the towns were able to leave the district and still had a vote in it right up until the minute that everything was done, they left the district. So my, first of all, my memory is, uh, on that is correct, right? It was a political decision by the M S B A and the towns that left. And the bottom line is that, that this was built as small as possible to meet the, the M S B A requirements, the M S B A said no smaller, the M S B A said no smaller. And we couldn't convince the other towns to build bigger because everyone was, people were not, would not listen to us. Right, okay, so that said, if you were once a member of this district and you bailed when it came time to pay the dues, you should never be allowed back in, period. Great. The four towns that are listed, one of, one of the four towns that want to come in again?
Uh, I'm like, do I dare say them? Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yep, and we received a formal letter requesting consideration from Sudbury. Then we did, um, interest from Water Town, Foxborough and Carlyle.
So three, if it, if it is a district, well, it's very straightforward, let's do whether that will be one or in my humble opinion, they made their choice. They were able to take advantage of the fact that they did not have to pay their commensurate share of the, uh, of the capital outlet because the state did not set the rate at an appropriate level. They were able to take advantage of that for the six years that they still had members in the district. Like no desire to, no desire to reward such terrible behavior.
And I respect that and I just want to remind all of us, um, and I know that there's lots of politics in this, I just always bring back ourselves and our team to the kids, right? So, um, not only the kids of our towns and our member towns, but of those kids of the four towns that, it's, I'm not, I'm not saying one more or the other, I'm just, and then, you know, um, I just, just reminding us to give them to kids because, yeah.
On that, on that note, Christine Russell, acting finance committee, acting has cut thirty full-time teachers from A D schools just in the last few years, because we could, are, are loving. Part of that is the increase in what we're spending here, so I am thinking about the kids and I agree with my about, you could say that. You know, unless there's a way, for me, unless there's a way for them to jump back in and figure they would have paid grand, for meeting those times.
Okay, and this is why we're here today, to, you know, this is why we're here, to, right? And yes, go ahead. So I'm Danny Clark, I'm, um, like chair of Arlington Finance Committee. Um, it's interesting what you said about the six hundred and forty-eight number because the understanding in Arlington was, the six twenty was the maximum chemistry it would be to care for.
I believe most of them is.
Okay, I'm just saying, that's what we understood and then in fact, we sent a lot of kids from Minutemen. We weren't sure that Minutemen would be able to achieve that. We've been very startled that we got above, I understand, I'm just saying, different people had different experiences, I want to know what the risks were. So, that said, I agree with you about towns that left and weren't willing to invest the capital on itself for us, that we certainly shouldn't be in the top of the list for consideration. I'm also wondering whether or not, you're a little premature, I understand it's going to take two years, but Arlington High School's going to come online fully in the fall of twenty twenty-four. And given the impact we have on enrollment and our having a first Chinese market online, it seems to me that waiting a year to start a process kind of see what our students decide to do might change the perspective on like the investment in, how we need to get kids in and so on and so forth. But I would say that, I would say it not with previous of the membership, the profitability consideration. And it doesn't sound to me like we need that for. So, I would, I'm not the only member here, but Michael agrees with me, I suspect, I think. Be that right?
Uh, Michael Bruderman, Arlington. Yeah, there were some towns that, that exited after, after prolonged discussions and, and with, and with hugs and regrets. And there were some towns that definitely burnt their bridges behind. And I can smell those embers every time I come here and I drive, drive in the big long parking lot and I cross the timeline from Lexington to Lincoln. But as Dr. Dawson reiterated, brings business of teaching kids. And if there are kids out there who want and need and can benefit from the way we present an education, I guess my own personal view is, I'll let some bygones be bygones. There will have to be choices though, as you alluded to, you know, if we're talking about expanding the district, there's going to be a town that's first and it's going to be a town that is a first, um, we won't forget, but fundamentally, we're in the business of providing a certain, certain mode and quality of education to kids out there who's, who's representatives through their town.
We have a question down here and, and actually, I do want to say I appreciate you reminding us of how soon Arlington will be coming online, yeah.
So, a couple of questions, first of all, Water Town was asking on this district also, they, they probably said, most people said probably except for Lexington and, and ours, I think they sent more students than every other member town, and they refused to join, so, I mean, that's, that's worrying. And, um, sorry. No, you're right, Water Town has been a long-term, non-district participant in Minutemen. Saved a lot of money on all those years too, for all those kids. And, and I would definitely like to say was that formerly the show was played through F Y twenty-four. And these new towns are going to come online, I have to say, we trust, went right ahead with it, we'll come onto that by twenty-six, I'm going to guess we got to recalculate that to the date of their mission, like it's like the big volume.
Could we maybe get some feedback on, I'm glad you raised that. There was a lot of thought that went into trying to figure out what a fair buying would be and I'm curious as to whether any of our, um, town reps here have any feedback on that.
Oh, I'm John Cosley, I'm from, um, the finance committee. I think I'll do, you know, my places here, my, thank you, you know, everything. You all deal with different bank where you did, um, I, I just, two thoughts, first on that one. Um, I think that there should be a premium place on those, particularly those who have a choice to join and decided not to, um, that, whether you call it a premium or a penalty or whatever, but they, they should have to pay an additional amount, um, if they have a choice then and turned it down and now want to commit. Um, and secondly, I think, I think from Nina's point of view, it echoes what I think you heard from town administrators that so long as even students are on the waiting list, I don't think Nina would be interested having more towns, uh, participate.
That was the approved.
And I don't know when that will change, but so long as that's the case, I don't think you're going to see support for it.
And thank you. Other thoughts on the buying? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just in my corner, yes.
I'm Terry Efferman, I'm on the select board in Foster and, um, listening to everybody, it sounds like maybe the buy-in number might be too low. And I'm thinking that to, um, the years when non-member towns came and their cost per pupil was much less, I used to be on the finance team, so was much less than what per pupil cost was for the members, right? So maybe they should have to pay back, um, what they, you know, some formula of what they wouldn't pay because the testing number was wrong, was way too low, right? So they weren't paying their fair share and we were paying it, so maybe if they want to come back, we'll have to pay that catch up.
Okay, thank you. So sorry, we have another really important.
Thank you, brother, thank you.
Thanks so much for coming, yeah, thank you, I'm sorry we couldn't stay long.
We do appreciate you bringing it up in advance, that's, that's definitely a good thing.
Any other thoughts or reactions, because I've had a lot of it, but just of
these important steps.
What are the next thoughts? So, if any one town is not interested in us pursuing, then you stay. Because we need a unanimous vote to proceed and we need you know, every town to say yes, we would like to consider, we would like to add. And as long as there is one town that would not, you know, bring them, we would not.
Uh, can I clarify that this vote takes place at a town meeting? So, you know, it is a town meeting vote. In terms of the immediate next steps, um, our, um, Communications Access and Admission Subcommittee and has been the ones, you know, who've been kind of in the, in the weeds on this. And I think our next step really is to take all the feedback that we've been getting tonight and to kind of sit, sit with it and sort with it and figure out, um, you know, well, are there things that we want to change about the, you know, what we've been thinking about it, is there a different proposal we want to bring forward to our towns? So we're going to go back, do a little more internal work, um, and figure out, you know, what is it that makes sense to come forward? That's that.
And just the fact that we've received one official letter of interest from a town require us to put it to, to our member towns in, in the next year or is that at our discretion?
It is at our discretion, uh, um, you know, in fact, the uh, expanding the district is first at the discussion of the school committee to bring that to the number.
So let me ask the procedural question, when you say you want to know whether or not we support this, are you asking for a vote of our school committee member, are you asking for consensus of views? You literally want test the waters and can be.
And then, uh, Jeff, Jeff is like dying to answer these questions.
So, uh, so when we, um, uh, first decided to pursue this, we did not know if it was a practical thing to do, but we did know that we had to answer certain questions before we can even have an intelligent conversation about it. And we also knew that even if at this time it doesn't make sense, the background work that we would do would be useful moving forward in case the right opportunity showed up. So our procedure was, let's do the background work, let's, you know, we don't really believe necessarily that our, our our number for the buy-in is accurate. But it's good enough to start to discuss, because we need a lot more input before we came up with a real number to make and on, you know, the town and the circumstances.
Right.
So we got to the point where we've done our, our work as far as we can. And we need to start a conversation happening, which is what we're doing here today. So we're going to take back all of your comments. And I don't see us, uh, unless the right opportunity comes by, because as the superintendent mentioned, the, uh, the money needed to create, uh, the four classrooms is not available. Without that, we can't even admit one town without impacting our educational program, which is one of the things that we looked at, we looked at. What is needed to keep our education program in, in, intact? Uh, what would be a fear buy-in and what's the impact on the operating cost? So that's the conclusion we came to. So he said that right now we are not at a point where we're gonna, we're gonna proceed unless something wild happens, like as the superintendent mentioned, they say we so want to join the district, here's ten million dollars so you can renovate the classroom, and then we have a specific to start working out a real plan that we could then discuss with you. So that's where we are now. We don't really have the, um, a way forward that we can see, but we, we can start talking to people. Yeah, and then see where it leads.
And what I would add to that is, I mean, what is true, the, you know, it's town meeting, so it's not the people in this room, it's not our town managers or administrators, it's not our finance committee or our select boards that make this decision. However, when we're putting forward something of this magnitude, we want to start talking with, um, you know, our, our town managers, our finance committee members, our, our select people, and just so that we can, we can get feedback and use that as we continue to try and build a proposal.
So let me give you one more piece of feedback, that I think is very practical and important piece of feedback that you have. Arlington has the longest, right, it's most ambitious town in the entire New England area. Yes, you and I know from our own participation, but it takes long, it's weeks, it's weeks long. So, let me finish my thought before you start knocking Arlington all over the room. At the last town meeting, we had a very contentious discussion about our students who will make this. So I can tell you right now that if you come to town meeting with this proposal and you, and it doesn't include and absolute guarantee that any student in Arlington wants to go to Minuteman will get into school, you will not get it through town. Which isn't to say that at some future point, again, depending on your capacity, what Arlington High School does in terms of what our students decide, you know, they want to be enrolled, so on and so forth. If at some point, all our students are getting in and there's a gap and we see a way to reduce our costs, then we'll be able to obviously family, sorry to say, the timing is wrong regardless of anything else. Um, but I don't want to say that the day will not come when our students, the students of all our communities are not on a waiting list because of other shifts in student population, so on and so forth. I can tell you our student population is going to level out. You can see our enrollment because our enrollment general. That's not going to be true financially. So yeah, we just tried. Or?
I'm Ford Spalding from Dover. I chair the building committee. Uh, I've been here for, I don't know, twelve, fifteen years. And all about the building. It took that long for us to get a building. Well, it's been up for a couple of years now, but it took that long to go through the process of doing that. And I had the good fortune of going to sixteen town meetings and sixteen finance committee meetings over all those periods of time. And I see some new faces here, but I sure know a lot of older faces that have been kicking around in, in the, in the towns. And it was a process that we went through. So I look at this as, as a great start. It's a process. It's something we need to discuss, whether it ever happens or not. Is, is not as important as we go through the process, and it's going to be a work in progress. There is the opportunity to expand the campus, and there's an opportunity that we talked about with the east building, trim of school building. And Dr. Dawson very nicely talked about four classrooms potentially there. I'm telling you, there could be more. Um, it's all about the money and it's all about what you, what we intend to do, and it's all about whether we're going to have the towns pay for that process or or do we have a partnership, a public-private partnership, and we're working on public-private partnerships, for example, with the athletic field. Um, to finish to get to stage two, which we're not ready to announce, but we're working with a major university in, in, um, from this area that might be interested in partnering with us. That could be move on to transferring to a, an academic, academic building that could be shared. Sharing is an issue also. How do you make it work? But these are things that we're exploring. It's going to take time. I'm actually working on that end of it. Um, and we'll see what happens. Um, I hear you. We can't tell Arlington or Needham. Not even Dover, I shouldn't mention, but you, you know, that you can't, your students can't come here. We have to figure that one out. And, and I agree also with the statement that we had some communities that pulled out of here. I'll keep my adjectives to myself, but I think it's shameful what they.
Oh, please don't. Come on, bathroom.
And I'm, it's shameful. And, um, so this is a work in progress and we need your help. We need honest input. What we received over here was great honest input. Arlington always is pretty good, great honest inputs. And, um, and I miss some of the people that were there, but, um.
Still there, they just not here.
Well, yeah, well, some, um, so I think this is a start, and it's a start of a conversation that you all need to have within your communities. You need to come to us with that information as we give you information. It may be given in the water. That's okay. Okay. I understand the object of our kids, but it's, it's okay.
Well, I just want to add one thought then to that, so I don't know which the rest of the community sounds most familiar, but Arlington is landlocked and it didn't build out, we have almost new to grow, we pass it off every three, five. And we will not be able to pass a budget for support. Just not in the cards, maybe five.
Get it? And you're building a great new school and you know some of the people that are working on it. So that's, it's, it's good.
It's one of, just echo what was said, if you have contentious issues, you can, if they can be overcome, now you can have an opportunity where you, school, you want to. First one is in district at the moment, meeting needs of the district managers, the staff that is coming up of Florida. That's who we saw really affected, listed cost that our towns have paid a bolt in the capital project and before we go, but in the tour and then you have to, it's not a good thing, we're not going to, it's making huge.
I just wanted to make a comment, which was like, I really appreciate all of that, the volunteers, the administration, I think it's a great, a destructive conversation. I don't want to network, it's not by volunteers, it's just thanks.
You don't think we get paid?
You're so naive, dude.
You have to pay it for ten years. It's longevity paying.
So any, any other comments, anything else? Um, I actually think this was a great start, just conversation. That's what we wanted it to into the conversation where, you know, didn't anticipate coming out of this with any decisions, uh, moving forward. So I really appreciate everyone taking the time, um, coming, participating in the conversation. As I said, you know, we want to take the what we heard, um, go back, you know, when we feel like, you know, we have something that is worth your time to come back, we will want to come back to you. Um, so again, thank you all for coming. Um, I want to remind you, I think there's still some sweets if you want to take any away. Um, but I want to say school committee members, we do have one other piece of business we need to do, um, before we adjourn this.
Can I, can I make two suggestions? One, I assume, uh, this will be available, um, to go back to our communities for people to see that. So, and so, and I think a summary, uh, document that would come out of this meeting, um, with some of the subjects that were brought up and that would be very helpful. And that way it gives everybody a roadmap to continue working on, uh, with us and, and because we don't expect you to be quiet while we're doing our work.
Great, thank you.
You don't expect me to be quiet?
You have a town meeting. I'd like to.
And thank you, everyone. School committee members, be that one vote.
It's crazy how we spoke, we never stipend, is that the name?
Well, okay, it's worth your while to stay.
Paychecks. Again, longevity. That is huge.
Erica, good to see you.
Yeah, then you would have her say.
Good. That was you saying.
School committee members, we have one quick vote. Then you can go home, like, tell them the doors are locked.
So, okay, you have everyone here. Okay, the, the, um, the robotics club is looking to do an overnight trip on May fifth in order to approve it. Oh, and here's all the information about it. It's our first robot, it was part of a winning three-team alliance at the New England District Western New England event in Springfield. There is still one more qualifying competition going on this weekend, which is not for us but for other districts. So based on that outcome, we should know if we qualify for district championship. The next round of competitions will be April sixth through April eighth at the Big E in West Springfield, Mass. And the team would go April fifth to set it up, um, and then stay over on the fifth, sixth and seventh for our competitions. Per our policy, J J A student travel, overnight travel requires school committee approval. And because our next meeting is until after the competition, we really need to, um, to consider this today. So could I entertain a motion to approve the overnight trip for the Minuteman Robotics Club to attend the Eastern Thank You as written in on the agenda? Is there a second? All in favor? Oh, wait, 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 I'm sorry, discussion, yes.
Place been chosen to, uh, to spend that overnight?
Yeah, well, because it's not definitely, they're working out all.
Be arranged.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, because we will find out hopefully within the next day or two if they're going to be competing or not. So right now they're just looking at what funds are available and then, yeah. So there's like three nights, how many nights?
Five, six, seven.
That's a long, long, long competition.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot for kids.
And we're going to have sufficient people overseeing the children.
Absolutely. And are there any costs that they will, um, going to absorb? But right now the families are looking to do some fundraising, but in their, um, um, what council are funded already there that could help cover if they not raising that price.
I was able to go see them compete when they were competing in Bridgewater, half a century in, I didn't know it could move so fast and our kids could grab that baby so fast, it's very.
Okay, any other comments? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Is that unanimous? Yes, it is. Thank you.
Good job.
Oh, um, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Good job.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.